Okay, it is seven oh one per my watch and I will call this public meeting to order. We are in the Chapua Library Theater and are have an abundance of exits in front of us. Out to the south parking lot behind us to the library itself and the courtyard up through the theater into the body of the library. In terms of roll call, we've got the entire board represented. As well as our library director and staff assistant, as well as several department heads, thank you very much in the audience. So with that, I think we can start with the pledge of allegiance. Okay, two times. Would have been better. Okay, do we have, I know we have some additional motions that that we talked about in advance. I did. But do we have any other proposed changes for the agenda? No. No, okay, let's move ahead. I'm not aware of any need for an executive session this time. No, okay. All right, then let's move to the acceptance of the minutes. The board has been holding a number of special meetings as we bring the budget to a close on a proposed basis. So we've got several here. Acceptance of the minutes of the March twenty seventh, twenty twenty three regular meeting. Do we need to accept each individual? Okay, all approved. I, I unanimous. Okay, acceptance of the minutes of the March thirty one, twenty twenty three special meeting. All approved. I. I unanimous. Acceptance of the minutes of the April thirteenth special meeting. All in favor, I. Thank you, Kevin. Okay, that was unanimous. And lastly, acceptance of the minutes of the April eighteenth special meeting on the budget, all in favor. Video is not up yet. I don't know the answer to that. Do you, Chantel?
It was gonna be minutes, not of it. I mean, minutes, not of it.
Not video, that one, okay. We had agreed at the table, we weren't gonna post the video, remember? For the whole discussion, and then you said because it was the budget that you wanted us to post the video. Yeah, I'll check into that afterward. Okay. Yep. We do have, you know, the minutes, which means our obligation. I did forward the video to Chantel because I saw that no one had retrieved it for her. So if it's just a matter of getting her the video, she has the video at this point. Perfect. Thank you. Lastly, it's my obligation to share the resignation of one of our trustees, Dana Wu. Dana had been appointed in September of twenty twenty two to fill the remainder of a term when Dr. Anand resigned. For personal reasons, Dana has resigned for personal reasons as well. I want to thank her. She worked hard for the library and for this board. And she brought great wisdom, work ethic, organization. She assisted us with deep dives into the areas of communications, HR, and governance. And was extremely additive and will be missed. So we appreciate her time. The, just to clarify, the role she filled will be filled with the elections, the upcoming elections and the may trustee. So we will return to five trustees very shortly. Additional board business, I want to thank fellow trustees, Brian Cook, who served on the HR committee, has agreed to step up as chair for that committee for for through May. Similarly, Pam Moskowitz, who served on the Communications Committee, has agreed to step up as chair for that committee. So thank you both. With that, I'll move forward for the president's report. I really wanted to speak about some of the upcoming important events that we have. The library budget presentation will be led by our library director, Bob Conrad, on Wednesday, May third at seven o'clock or as part of the Chapua Central School District Board of Education present our overall meeting. So we will be a small slice of that. I hope people can join us. Similarly, or as a follow up to that, I believe on May fourth or shortly thereafter, our budget notice and annual report will be mailed to the community, which will summarize much of what Bob speaks about on the third. Lastly, on May sixteenth, I want to call everyone's attention to the fact that the elections will be held at the Horace Greeley High School gym from seven AM to nine o'clock PM. Hopefully, everyone can make it. This will be on the Chapua Central School District Budget Vote and Board of Education member election, as well as the Chapua Library, Tax Levy and Board of Trustees election. We will have two positions to fill. We have two candidates who have completed the necessary paperwork to run. My understanding, and I actually should have noted that date, but Bob, I don't know if you remember it off the top of your head. My understanding is that because there is a differential in term length for the two trustees for our board, one will have the usual five-year term, one will fill almost the remaining three years of a term. So those two will be included in Candidates Night led by the League of Women Voters. So they will each present in in terms, you know, there will be a write-up in terms of their bio and capabilities, which I'm excited about, and I think they'll answer some questions as well.
Yeah, I can get you that date.
Remember.
They have one scheduled at town hall for the evening of Wednesday, May tenth.
Okay.
On the school and library board elections, if they are contested. I don't know the situation of the school election, but the library board, they they've already decided, even though there's two candidates running for two vacancies, because one is the longer of two terms, they chose to go ahead and have candidates form.
And in that case, the individual with the greatest number of votes will fill the five-year term. Okay, with that, I'll turn to Bob and your director's report.
Great, thank you, Jen. Let's see, the first item on my director's report, depending on whether I go with the agenda or my director's report. I have correspondence from Brett Wyatt, writing from the Newington Cropsey Foundation. I included it in the board packet. I hope you were able to see his very generous offer of a print by his late father, William Stanley Wyatt. It's a linoleum print, and we're allowed to choose one. If I were the one to choose, I would be picking the Robert Frost poem Burial, which may not be to everyone's liking, but I thought I would open it up to the board to discuss and direct me on which to reply we might like. Also included is information that our own gallery curator Larry is perfectly capable of matting, framing, and hanging that somewhere nice in the library. And it raises the question of how you would like us to go about displaying some of the art that we have tucked around the library here and there. So I'll open that to the board discussion right now. You recommend the World Less Traveled? No, sir?
Maybe we could set up a poster board and let patrons.
Oh, that's a good idea.
That's a great idea.
We could put it on the friends wall that they haven't yet filled.
Yeah, that's a great idea, and it's one thing I can run with.
They could like write a number in a box or something, or. Yeah.
Great. After hours, when no one's looking, I will stuff the ballot box. Burial, my personal favorite. Let's see. Next on my agenda. Find it. I wanted you to know about some operational developments we've had. We've installed feminine hygiene products in 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 baskets in all of the adult-sized washrooms in the library. They'll be replenished by the custodian and the situation will be monitored because I think it's it's new for some members in our community. And especially children in those spaces or even middle schoolers might not be familiar with these in public washrooms yet. So we'll make sure that the situation isn't burdensome or abused. But basically, we're expecting to work out any any glitches as they occur. And we'll continue to purchase them as a custodial supply and a regular library custodial purchase. I need to let you know that the children's program room returned to service and that the first programs to go back into that space are likely to be scheduled for the month of May. Just bear in mind that the determination for which programs are going where, that's made on a case-by-case basis. So for example, this room with the linoleum floor is better suited to certain gardening, food, and finger painting programs that generate small messes rather than a carpeted program room. But certainly, different forms of interactive play or even certain storytimes that could can fit into that space will be returned to usage in May. I should say that the seed library is up and running in the lobby. But I am at a terrible fault because I wanted to check my notes and find out who organizes the seed library. I don't think it's a staff initiative. I think it may be the garden.
Is it the garden? It's routine library.
Yes, Kathy's doing the seeds. That's great. Thank you. It is our own teen librarian Kathy Paulson and
Thank you.
And and our our librarian, Tanya. That's great to know. In my old library, it was the Cornell Cooperative Extension that ran the seed library so that we have two staff members who are equal to the task of a cooperative extension, I think speaks volumes of our staff. Great, thank you. I'm glad I paused to find out. And additionally, three boxes of withdrawn adult books were sent to sustainable shelves as a second donation. So I drew your attention to the various department head reports and just briefly to be aware of certain programs that the I'll Have What She's Having Jewish Deli program we had March ninth, that was the highest attended of the month. Theater storytimes right here. Children's storytimes have been consistently well-attended through March, anywhere from thirty-five to over fifty. Per program, fifty is the capacity, but we don't turn away, for example, grandma or grandpa if they are added to the party. So that's how we get to over fifty in some cases. But due to the popularity of these great programs, we're adding one or one or two more per week to those that we've already added. So we're consistently well-attended for a larger number of programs. And we just don't want to add too many all at once that we wouldn't be able to sustain. So we'll take it and see how it goes. And if we need to keep adding one or two more programs per week, if we need to add that many per month, that's what we'll do until eventually we need to hire a million more librarians to sustain it. And a program that I thought looked really interesting in April, there's so many programs to choose from. So you may have your own favorites, but I thought that the teen blackout poetry program looked really interesting. If you don't know what that is, they take a full page of text and they create a poem by, they take a full page of print text from from an old volume, a library discard or similar, and they create a new poem by blacking out most of the words on the page, and it's the remaining words that form a poem. So look forward to that April twenty fifth. I am trying to include theater utilization from outside groups in the director's report. And the biggest use of this theater space that I'm aware of has been the Newcastle Fire Department. They have been hosting a series of at least a half dozen informational sessions about their facility expansion. I should point out that they lowered the screen behind us there for one of these and due to the long disuse of that screen, it is now in a permanently lower position until it can be repaired. So that is, this has actually been down for couple of weeks now. I think we had another meeting in here. You've seen it, but you didn't ask. But now I am officially reporting. Let's see, moving on to the rest of my report. I have some personnel updates to share. The part-time library clerk Shane Iello was able to score an eighty-five on the library clerk exam. That is a good score, and we don't currently have a full-time library clerk vacancy for him to be moved into, but that could change in the near future. So just be aware. The staff training topics that I shared with you all in a special meeting on April thirteenth, I included those again in the board packet. And I just wanted to give an oral update on what has happened since the thirteenth. I've reached out to Civil Service and to WLS, trying to schedule, trying to find if they offered to training or could recommend trainers that we could hire to address those topics. And from Civil Service in particular, because we actually chose a lot of Civil Service training as one of the topics. I don't think they're going to be able to, they're in the midst of rebuilding the training page on their website. And they told me and Chantel that they wouldn't give us our orientations until that was done. Regardless, I don't have an update yet from Civil Service. So I have been in conversations with WLS. There's a lot more interest. I won't say there's more interest. I'll say that conversations are ongoing. They have a dedicated technology trainer. So the tech training elements are well within their wheelhouse. But they also field these kinds of requests, and I think that they're looking at I think that they like that we're vocal about our needs, our training needs, and it helps them address the the rest of the member libraries' similar needs. All that said, my telephone appointment with Allison is scheduled for tomorrow, so I don't have any further details on whether WLS can assign those trainers. But in the meantime, I would ask board trustees, you all have, well, I don't assume anything, but many of you have had training some of these topics. So in particular, we're looking for the diversity training and security training. If those may be harder for us to find, there is, there's not a simple way to call Civil Service or WLS and say, you know, we we need something that's pretty standard in the corporate world. So if you have those contacts, if you know of good trainers, let me know. I need to give an oral update on the staff, the staff assistant temp and the new position, which we can refer to as a secretary or the library director, although it's up to Civil Service to assign it, the secretary role. My understanding is that we have a couple days left to hear back from the staff assistants who have been canvassed. Chantel will correct me if I'm mistaken. And that the new position description has been forwarded forwarded to Civil Service. We're waiting for that to come back. Once they've assigned a job title to it, presumably secretary, then we can begin to canvas any list that they have. So or reach out to to the public in the absence of a list, if there is a current one. Finally, on personnel, the telecommuting addendum. Oral update on directives received. Okay, so the status of that is that I solicited feedback from the department heads, and I got feedback from the three department heads most likely to make use of the telecommuting identity policy. And after incorporating their recommendations or in some cases shooting them down, I turned that policy over to the SK for their legal department's review, and that's where it sits right now. And then finally, in my report, I shared an anecdote just of breaking into conversation at the circulation desk with a patron. While I was speaking with the circulation clerk and we were overheard and joined by a library patron who shared a really educational but also very moving story about her childhood in Baghdad and the forces that forced her family out and to and how she wound up coming to America, which I shared in the packet as well. Let me check the agenda items. The disaster plan update was included in the board scan. But I'm afraid it's not ready for board approval. It was, my updates were based on a draft I was given by one department head. But unfortunately, from the board scan, I've learned from other department heads that there were addenda to the old disaster plan that did not get incorporated. So by this time next month, or not even next month, by the next board meeting, which is in early May, we should be able to incorporate that, those changes and ask for your approval of the plan. Let's see, what else am I missing? Oh, and it's exciting to say that at that same May eighth meeting, our children's department head, Robin Friedman, will attend to make her own report on department operations and department heads may be asked to sort of join in in a rotation of department updates because your library director can serve as a middleman. But sometimes hearing from these department heads directly shines a better light on what they're doing, how they're doing it, and why. So that concludes my director's report for the month of March.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Brian, can we turn to you for the finance section of the agenda?
So for the treasurer's report, we don't have a treasurer's report this month because we're in transition. So we we've we've moved on. Joe Gallo is retired. We'll thank him for his service. Been excellent and helpful in the transition. Then the Rocky Smith will be taking over, and we spoke with them this morning. And they they seem to have a good handle on things. So we're excited to be moving forward with them. At the next meeting, the day eight, they will have the updated March financial statements. Chantel has prepared an exhibit of all of the checks that have gone out and we've gone through those, and they have all the usual backup and supporting information. So that's all all in the packet as well. I guess we should talk about the audit, the statement that we need to make.
So in absence of the treasurer's report. So did anyone do the functions that happen before that report's written? Like, did you look at the bank account and reconcile?
Yes.
Chantel has reconciled the and then we'll have the, we'll have the treasurer's report on May eighth. So in as as the audit was coming to a conclusion, Jeff Shaver found there was one item outstanding from October of twenty twenty one. This predates me, so I only have it from the minutes, but the board had authorized the accounting transfer of four hundred thousand dollars from the from the general fund to the capital fund. It turns out that only, I confirm this with Joe Gallo, only three hundred thousand was actually transferred. So we we need to make a motion and go back and reflect that only three hundred thousand that we transferred. And that will satisfy Jeff Shaver, our auditor, and we can propose that.
So we made a motion to transfer four, and Joe only transferred three? Did he tell you why?
I think he only transferred three because there wasn't actually four available. I think the the issue is it's it's from a cash versus accrual standpoint. It it looked like four was available, but it wasn't. And if we if we had transferred the four, the general fund would be in a negative balance, and that would just look weird. So the easiest thing to do is to just go back and change
Correct that.
the original, correct the original minutes.
You can't correct minutes, but we can make another motion.
Make a change to them or whatever. So I'm probably gonna word this incorrectly, but I'll give it a try. But I would like to make a motion to clarify the original amount to be transferred to capital from the general fund on in October twenty twenty one at the board meeting from four hundred thousand to three hundred thousand.
Sounds valid. I second the motion. All in favor? I I'm just looking up the motion, the original motion. Did you bring the original motion and the date or no?
It was the October. It was in the email that I sent. It was on October twelfth of twenty twenty one. October twelve.
So I'm looking at the financial motions, and I don't see a motion for four hundred thousand. You saw it in here?
Jeff Shaver sent me the quote.
That's not one you remember because that's a substantial amount. October twelfth, twenty twenty one is over a year ago, and I would not rely on my memory. I would go to the minutes, but I don't see anything in the minutes, which is why it could be that it was in September. I can go back. Twelfth, may have been the date of the actual transfer. Do you want to table the motion till next month when you can find the original motion and the and the new motion?
You want to think Jeff needs to get this done?
I can see that in the September minutes that Mr. Gallo recommends transferring four hundred thousand to the new account and depositing the rest. That Mr. Gallo recommends transferring four hundred thousand to the new account and depositing the rest into the general fund.
So Mr. Gallo recommended an amount we didn't have. That's concerning.
Well.
Well, nevertheless, we're looking back. We can't correct it.
Right, um, but there's no motion to correct. So it may be just making a motion for whatever money left the account because we were not aware.
Yes. We are correcting what the board approved. Which sounds like.
So I would recommend that's not possible.
This ten twelve. I have the email from Jeff, Mr. Gallo reported that he will submit a written report in future. Or that we will be closing people's bank account and transferring the funds to the new capital account at the Westchester Bank. The gal recommends transferring four hundred thousand to the new account and depositing the rest into the general fund. Mr. Farber will reach out to Mr. Miller to check if funds have been received, so. I have the ten twelve date. I don't, I don't know whether it happened actually in September or in October. Frankly, it's irrelevant.
Right, right.
So we just need to clean it up for the auditor.
Okay, but but if there's no, we need to know what we're cleaning up. So are we cleaning up that there is?
He was told that four hundred should be transferred to capital.
There's no telling him in our minutes of four hundred grand, so there's nothing to clean up. It's. He moved money that it was not authorized to be moved from what we're looking at unless you find the actual motion.
Hold on, I don't like that. Maybe Joe Gallo was something that was not authorized. He's not here and I don't think he would do anything if it's not authorized.
No, I wish neither, but that's the way it appears based on us not being able to find.
So what what Joe was saying is he did less than what was authorized. Four hundred was authorized and now he went three hundred.
Likely, he circled back to the board, pointed out this discrepancy.
No, and he's never circled back to this board. If we made a motion to move money. If we made a motion to move money, it would appear in our minutes. So before we make another motion. We should look at all of twenty twenty one and find the original motion. And if there is an absence of a motion. Then that says something to us as well and we'll correct for that.
I'm not sure I follow that logic.
Well, we don't know what we're correcting until we know what motions were made. It appears that no motions were made and money moved without permission.
No, that's not accurate. We're Jeff Jeff is is saying that he was told to move four hundred thousand dollars from the general fund. Capital and he can do that, but that would put the general fund in a negative balance. And what what? We then found out is that four hundred thousand wasn't transferred in the on October of twenty twenty one. It was only three hundred thousand. So.
So.
So we don't need to have the the financial statements reflect the four hundred thousand. We only created three hundred thousand and that was a year and a half ago.
Right, but but it's possible. So I don't know why the three hundred thousand got transferred. Because nobody authorized three hundred thousand to get transferred unless you show me.
Uh, we don't have enough funds. So he would be transferred less than what was authorized.
But why is he moving money without motions?
Well, they're not because of the closing of the people's account.
So you need a motion to do that, so.
But we we cannot correct what the board did incorrectly in the past.
No, no.
All we can do is make this correction so that the funds are accurate. So that the auditors can finalize the audit and we move forward.
Very important to understand what happened though, because. For the sake of the library, it's very important that everyone at this table understand that money doesn't move without motions. And this has come up multiple times where I've been concerned that the level of. Knowledge on the board isn't sufficient to manage the funds of the library. So that's why I'm making a big deal out of this. Okay.
Um, so it is in the treasurer's report, which went to the entire board. Mr. Gallo reported that he will submit a written report in the future. Mr. Gallo reported that we will be closing the people's bank account and transferring the funds. To a new capital account at the Westchester Bank. Mr. Gallo recommends transferring four hundred thousand. To the new account and depositing the rest into the general fund. Mr. Farber will reach out to Mr. Miller to check if funds from the capital fund can be moved back to the general fund if needed. The. Statements were approved. The motion was by Ms. Shea. The second was by yourself.
Where? So we're we're moving forward with this vote and if you want to report to the board in our next meeting, that would be delightful. This is a motion to approve the August statement. It has nothing to do.
No, this statement of the treasurer's.
No, that's not what you're approving. So so then you don't understand what we're through the when we approve the statement right now.
We're going to make this correction so that the audit report reflects the reality of what occurred. And you can come back to the board with a historical depiction of what occurred led up to this.
Why don't we make a motion to move retroactively to move the balance of funds? From the people's bank account. To where did it go? Westchester or was it Valley? No, no, but to wherever it went, capital. Without a dollar amount, unless you know precisely the dollar amount, because it probably wasn't a straight three hundred.
No, no, confirmed it. It was three hundred.
Three, three hundred.
It was three hundred.
And that's what the auditor found?
Yes.
Okay, correct.
And this is satisfying the auditor. It satisfies, it's Joe can confirm it. And he said this is, this situation has happened several times in the past, given that the difference between cash and accrual accounting and when they're looking at books. If you move the money, it may it may actually need it in the future. So. Um, one recommendation was to wait until the audit and financial completed to make these transfers. Another was to reduce substantially the size of the capital fund. To the projects that are only specifically involved. Those were two recommendations. We haven't yet reviewed it with our new treasurer. The Rock and Smith, that's first, we're going to get them up and running for it, but they are, they're aware of it and they they know about this situation.
It's gonna be good to have fresh eyes on all of this. Okay, returning to the motion, um, which I seconded. All in favor? I. So that's three out of four. Abstention? Oh, you're not in favor.
Well, I I I you went out of order and I was waiting for not in favor and then abstention, but. Um, I am stating abstain. Right.
Okay. Um, Brian?
Yeah.
Would you want us to go ahead and approve the bills as presented?
Yes.
Or should we wait and do the full treasurer's report?
Um, I guess I'm not sure if it matters whether to wait, uh. I guess it doesn't, it doesn't hurt to wait until. Until we have the new report on May eighth.
Okay. And the next meeting's two weeks away, so okay.
Okay, but I point out Chantel did a nice job presenting it all in a good format, so thank you.
Thank you.
Well, then hold up the checks going out.
Oh, well, yeah.
So if you were to approve the nice. Check report, then the checks.
Then I think we should approve them because they are, all the backup information is there as well. They've been. Approved by the the two trustees as well.
Okay, um. So the bills um to date have been presented in a schedule and reviewed. All in favor? I.
Hi, is there no room for discussion first? Okay, um, I had mentioned that prior to the pandemic, we brought the box. Sometimes we were lazy because we're still in the building, but we need to get back in the habit of bringing the box. Is that the box or? It was a green box that I just. The the all the invoices and bills so that we could look at them if we wanted to. They're supposed to be physically in the room with us at the meeting.
Um, so the handbook actually does not say that. Um, there was actually communication. You were included. Um, wherein we agreed that when the meeting is in this building with the actual um invoices about two hundred feet away. We're okay.
Okay, so we should have that discussion at the table because the only way the public is invited to participate in our discussions. As if they happen above the table. If we're doing it in email. We are not doing the public the best service.
I disagree. There's a list of all the checks that were were here and they're audited and. Uh, if anybody has any questions, they're welcome to come and ask. So I disagree with that clarification that things are not being done. Above the table.
The conversation to not bring the invoices and the backup documentation is a board level decision. Boards do not meet outside of a table to make collective decisions. So any decision we make. We should have discussion at the table and make the decision at the table.
It wasn't a decision. It's a clarification as to what's recommended.
Well, it is change in board protocol, so that to me.
No, Liz, I've I've been on the board since May. There have never been bills here.
That's been a that's been a persistent mistake that we've been making. And we're trying to come out of the pandemic and have our best practices. And we'll be there at the table too in terms of meeting law.
I would hope. Okay, so I'll make a motion that as long as we are confident. Now trustee has reviewed the invoices represented in the schedule of bills presented as part of our monthly financial statements. And we know that where they are located in this same building and the meeting is in this building. We are fine with them not being in the actual room, but they will be provided should any member of the public request such. All in favor? Do I have a second?
A second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I the whole, I mean, I just feel like there's this erosion of all of the controls that we put, that we work so hard to put in place. So. We tried to have a routine and I was gonna draft something, but open meeting law doesn't give you a framework for how often you have to present things. It just doesn't. So when I look to try to build out what the routine should be. I couldn't do it because there it's really minimum gates. So really what we had been doing at the table was a best practice. Where we would have a conversation, then we would have the document a month later and then a month later to vote. So we had this kind of three month kind of. The pacing was so that the public could follow with it. And then now we've tried to change the pacing. And now you're saying you don't even want to bring the box. Which it creates a hurdle and the reason for a lot of these minimum requirements. Is because the government thinks about these things a lot more than we do. We come, we serve for however many years. They think through those rules and they put those rules in place to help make things as best. So anytime that you try to change those rules, you're going up against best practices and and really minimum requirements.
I appreciate your comments.
Thank you for bringing the box to our attention after.
Chantel, as our staff assistant, do you have any concern that the documents could be readily. Um, provided if a member of a public of the public requested such in any of these meetings? Obviously, if the this meeting needs to be held for emergency or other reason in another building, we'll make sure we bring those bills with us. Okay, all in favor?
I. Uh, we're not discussing the bills.
We just did, Liz.
We discussed a procedure for getting the bills here. I would actually like us to look at the bills.
We've never discussed.
We've never discussed that.
We always discuss the bills. No, we haven't. Well, we're supposed to because we vote on them, so it's motion, motion, discussion, vote. So can we look at the BSK bills because they're extremely high this month? And I'd like to see all the things that we're asking BSK to work on. And discuss.
Brian? Did you review the invoice? Excuse me, did you review the invoice?
I want to discuss at the table with the public what we're currently having BSK look at. The packet got posted. I woke up at six forty five. Sunday morning or Saturday morning. I can't remember which, but the meeting is Monday night. That's not even twenty, that's not even a business day.
The legal requirement is twenty four.
You understand, but what I'm telling you is that by going with legal requirements, we are not doing. The same level of quality work that we have been doing previously and I take issue with that.
Okay, duly noted. I'll I'll return to the motion to approve the. Going to circle back to approve the bills as presented for payment. Do I have a second? Ham seconds? All in favor? I. Three out of four. Not in favor? Okay, and then secondly, um. Restating again, forgive the repetition, um, the approval the of the procedure whereby the. Invoices represented in the schedule of bills will be retained in Chantel Caney's, our assist, our staff assistant's office. Hundred or so feet away in an organized fashion and available for public review whenever the. Board of trustees meeting is in this building or taken with us should the meeting be held in another location. Do I have a second? Second, all in favor? I. And Liz, will you be not in favor or abstaining?
Same.
We held a special meeting. On April eighteenth to approve the proposal so you could move forward. With the advice to the CCSD district clerk in terms of the tax levy. As well as the preparation for May third um of our presentation to the public on our our. Um, proposed budget and the subsequent May fourth notice um for the budget. Do you want to summarize that we had talked about since that was a special meeting versus a regular meeting, which was. Not everyone's preference, but it's what time dictated. Do you want to summarize?
I I can try to to summarize the um. The special meeting was for the board to approve. The proposed budget. We had uh the district's ballot deadline as well as our own. Um, annual newsletter um print deadline to hit. And the newsletter's deadline was today. The ballot deadline was. Last week, so I needed to get some figures to present. Now. The. Public meeting, when I present this graphic budget. I can explain that we've identified about sixty five thousand dollars in one time. Operational expenses that we can instead pay from. The capital line under the recommendation of our new treasurer. Because they're related to um potential expenses for the design phase. Of certain capital projects. And I should explain to anyone. Interested that at my old library and I apologize for this. But the um. The procedure was to budget for those design elements. Out of the operating budget. And my question to, what I didn't understand is that they could very reasonably be approved by the board trustees from the capital budget. So I didn't, we didn't have the answer from our new treasurer until after these deadlines. So the the bottom line is. That the overall. Um. Tax levy proposed increase doesn't change at all. The the tax levy increase is the one thing that the public actually votes on. And once they approve it, or in the unlike the scenario, they do not approve the tax levy increase. In either case. The figures come back to the board who who adopts a final budget. And we have time to adopt that final budget at the May meeting. Um, excuse me, I misspoke. The May meeting falls before the tax levy move. So it would be at the June meeting or we could postpone it as late as the July meeting because July checks. Aren't supposed to go out until after they're approved at that meeting. Um. That is the gist of the purpose of that meeting and. The uh, what I believe was. Uh, the only really controversial element of this budget. I don't think there's any disagreement uh among trustees. That were. The the amount of the tax levy increase. Um. Or the other figures from the operating budget. So.
Well, I think we had great discussion as a group. Well, I think we had great discussion as group in February, March and and then finally on April eighteenth. Uh to bring it to resolution, so thank you for the hard work.
Thank you.
Okay. Um Brian, were you going to make a motion on Gansper Markoff?
Uh sure, um we have a contract with Ganser. Markoff, who does our Gatsby, it's required in a New York state law. We owe the uh course retirement obligation valuations. And we have a potential three-year contract uh with them for the amount of six thousand seven hundred eighty-two dollars. As we heard from our discussion with our auditor, they recommend the miley, they've been working for us for a while, so. We'd like to continue with them, so I would make a motion to sign a three-year contract and continue with Ganser. For our Gatsby.
One second. All in favor? I. For bringing that to the table.
Then before we close finance as part of our um. Uh kickoff discussion with the Rocky Smith today, um we're gonna need a software upgrade and quick books to go to the remote desktop. Chantel, press it out today. It would come to three hundred ninety-five dollars a month to include the three users required, Chantel Bob and um. And Mayaki Smith. Which comes to four thousand seven hundred forty dollars per year, I what are we paying now? So this would be all incremental. Um but what this would do is it would enable remote access. It wouldn't necessitate the. The treasurer coming in and physically. Physically retrieving the uh the information. And it will enable for real-time updates. Great long efficiencies for us.
Great. I'm recommending that for some time. Okay, do we have a second? All in favor? I.
I think I have an addition to the finance report. Sure, um I was reviewing the minutes, I see that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm not in favor of that, I you didn't call for discussion and I went with it, but I'm sorry, I'd like to just be abstaining on that one. Don't worry about the discussion.
Okay, do you have any points you'd like to raise?
I don't want to slow us down.
Nope, we're. We're here for the purpose of discussion.
No, we're just blowing the cost through the roof in the in this. But it's fine, you know, it would be nice if we had the transparency of that cost when we made the other decision and that and. So it I I'm just cautioning everyone where it's. It's a tax.
And we're operating within the budget. Okay.
We aren't though, we're blowing the budget out of the water and we're spending down an asset. Our capital fund isn't like, it's our asset. So you're balancing a budget by spending down an asset.
For greater efficiency of um better financial accounting. That which I think better protects the public.
That's fine, in aggregate, you have a problem, but. Somebody else on here.
Okay. Um so next up, Catherine.
May I bring a seat to the table or?
I'll be happy to.
Okay.
That's great, thank you. Gosh, but then I can't see you. All right, let me just, I'll stay here, see, then they can see me and you can see me, is that okay?
Oh, Chantel's pretty covered.
Well, anyway, thank you all for inviting me. Um I am here on behalf of the friends. And when you are having your very exciting um vote on May sixteen, we will be here getting ready for book sale. So I strongly recommend all of you to come and volunteer. We start on the fifteen, which is that Monday. Those will be the first two donation days, so Monday and Tuesday. Then Wednesday evening will be the membership for the members preview. And then sale days start on Thursday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Half-day Saturday, uh all free on Sunday, so it's our traditional format. Um we've gone back to two full days of donations, so um we're getting a very large dumpster. Um as we have in the past. Uh but I do encourage all of you, um love to see any of you, all of you, even for an hour. Just wear your yucky clothes, do their Bethy and dirty because old books, you know.
Are old.
But, you know, the librarians. That get first pick, so I wanted to remind you about your wish list. Okay, so basically they all come in and skim off the top. And we do conclude that in our final numbers, so I do want you to know it's substantial, thousands of dollars worth of books. Get pulled because uh Chapqua residents and other residents read one book, what run, read it once and then they think they're done with it. And we're happy to accept it as a library book, anyway. Um the friends are doing extremely well, we've been doing very well on our technology. Our fancy new website. Which I I'd encourage you all to continue to, we keep posting pictures and and various things. And on our side, our tre- our treasurer and our communications officer has done a wonderful job elevating. Our communication structure. So now when you email me or Catherine at this time, you I I now have an alias web. You know, email address that says president, so the next president that comes along will get those emails and I won't. Anyway, so now we have a treasurer at French Chapua Library Friends. President um communications and we have to have hello. So if you want to write a question or whatnot, hello. So anyway, that's taken a lot of infrastructure because we are. Just a a uh group of volunteers and. We don't spend a lot of money on things, however, MailChimp is gonna start charging us. Which is very, this is very much to our dismay. Because MailChimp, like other things, used to be free and they are not going to be free anymore, even for not. Based on our mail size. Anyway, the point is is that we are elevating our electronics and we are elevating our structure in addition to having more. Uh different ways for people to become members. And um digitally and for the paper as well. We had a very good um annual fun drive, which I don't know if you all, if you had received, if you've. If you've been a friend in the past, you may have received a personalized letter from someone. And I don't know if you all heard the good news. I don't know if we shared, gosh. We raised the most money ever in our annual fun drive, so we. Uh we got a, so this was our fiftieth year, this was your hundredth year. Um and we got one donation for ten thousand dollars. Anyway, so anyway, it was a very, very, very successful campaign. It almost might be, it almost might be bigger than book sale.
That's great.
We'd love to keep it going and go probably to the annual front driver the same way next year.
Great.
The personalized letters and things and the stamps and we had, you know, we sat around the dressing and yes, it was very glorious, but wonderful.
Do you want to talk about moving the tree over?
Love to talk about moving the tree over, so our tree is in this lobby. Um and has been there for quite a while, but through the hard work and effort of writing, people were adding many new leaves. Now and we are adding, I don't think it's there yet, when it started growing. No one knows what the tree is. It's just a tree, it doesn't say what it's about, anyway, we're adding a plaque to explain what the tree is. And thanks to everyone's cooperation, we are moving the tree. Into the library. Um uh the a big blank wall outside of children.
To the left of the children's area.
Children, no, the people that walk in, the majority of the people, they all walk in up there, they keep walking down here. And then we're gonna make them feel oh so wonderful because now their names are gonna be on the tree in the library. So thank you all very much for your support and help with that, um Kristen's been taking charge of ordering all the new leaves. And hopefully, it'll. Be here soon.
It's great.
We'll work with the custodian and get it all mounted. Anyway, so things are going very well, um we have new board members and new activity. And so please register, we have a sign of genius for volunteering for wholesale.
Okay.
Um so please sign up and does anyone have any questions about, I mean, book sale? For those of you that haven't experienced wholesale.
Yeah, I think I think if you could give contacts because there are patrons.
Five miles of books, so I know you think I'm taking over too much of your space. Like I know this, because you actually said, why do you need the courtyard and the program room?
That's not what I said.
No, well, I had to pick, but I went with the program room. So basically, the idea is we fill this space, we fill the gallery, we fill the theater and then we will fill the programmer. And we actually try to be as neat as possible, but it's very difficult, but yes, it is thirty-five. It is thirty-five miles of books, it's the best, I think, one of the best volunteer efforts in the community. Because it's fast and furious. Monday morning, nothing is here, by Wednesday night, we have a functioning store. It's all super, super cool. And uh yeah, so anyway, but yes, it is messy, it is a little chaotic, we do apologize. Um ahead of time, but we do clean up, so. And it's all for the good and we then we and then we're out of here by Sunday afternoon. It magically all goes away, I did share with you and hopefully I will be able to uh have pictures. Um but all of the books last year at the end of on Sunday all went to Kenya.
That was great.
So um we've invited that woman back and she says she's gonna come on Sunday. Um we told the public they can come at eleven and she can come at twelve, just so our public can have first dibs. But then everything may end up on a crate to Kenya.
Great.
And yeah, it's really, really remarkable.
Church, if I remember correctly, right?
So she she works out of Boston, she runs her own faith mission. And uh it's for people learning to read in Kenya. And there are some crazy pictures.
You've gotta give us the photos because it's it's amazing, it's little kids holding up, you know.
Two thousand twenty-one or or it's some crazy, they're just crazy pictures of the very um. People on the other side of the world. So anyway, so yeah, so it all goes to a a good cause, but um so yes, that's, and then we do not usually meet over the summer. So the friends usually take a break in July and August. Um but we're always open for ideas. And love to hear about programs, so please, you know, feel free to email us with your requests. Um. So not just you, not just you and you, but you too, but um so that's what we're here to do.
Well, thank you for your hard work on behalf of the libraries, really, it's a very, very much appreciated.
Really, really happening now, so we got. Who knows, it's, who knows what's gonna happen next? Anyway, um if anyone has any ever any questions or concerns about uh the financials or anything with friends. Um you know, Bob attends most of our meetings, of course, you all are invited on a regular basis. Certainly, any of you who want to hang out and come ask for money, you know, um you know, we're available. Um unfortunately, me at the same time with my book.
Oh, I know.
Well, you can always send me a little note. So but yes, we really would like, I mean, that's why I'm here, we're here to serve, so we're here to support. So thank you very much for having me.
Thank you, Catherine, thank you for the report.
All right.
Then do we need to also make a motion to include the Rocky Smith, Darren and Trevor, or do you?
We need to administer the oath, etc., so. I thought was we would want to do that maybe. We need to get that filled out, you know, revised and all that jazz, so.
I'm sure they have a bunch of memories.
Yes, yes. Um. So finance, we've covered a lot, do you have anything further to report in terms of the finance committee?
I think that that's everything, I would just say, the entire board has put in a lot of work on getting the budget to where it is, well, Bob, thank you, so. Uh that's yeah, pretty much it from finance.
Thank you for shepherding the process. Cam, can I turn to you for policy and bylaws?
Before you do that, I'm sorry, I don't want to have to interrupt, I'm gonna exit now um and go, I'll catch up with you offline. Thank you. I kind of took you up when you told uh when you were saying you were expecting us to go an hour. Send me now. Okay.
Yeah, that was still Catherine was speaking, so, okay. Um, anything in to report for policy and bylaws?
Um. Yes, we will have policies to be handed out by for the five-eight board meeting. This month, very busy with budget meetings and so. All on the table to be presented for five-eight.
Okay.
And. Sorry, you've mentioned what policies you expect or at least though you know at this point in time. Oh yes, absolutely, okay. Okay, on the spot, no, 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 not at all, not at all. Uh circulation and borrowing policy, which is formerly known as library cards, fines and fees. Social media policy and internet policy. And um in the from Brian, not to take your HR committee, but just just. It kind of overlapped a little bit, so we also will present um a nursing, a nursing policy. Which will go into the employee handbook, so it just kind of sort of crossed over a little bit, okay? And then as far as the bylaws, we are um going to, we are going to move in the direction. Of of working within our charter of revisiting trustee, trustee terms.
Okay, great, thank you.
Did we make a comment about why we're reviewing the trust each one?
Sure, be happy to speak um on that, I mean, we will make a formal presentation. Um you know, we're working with council to amend the charter and we will have a vote on the. Proposed changes to the charter, uh which are precedent to our recommendation of changes to the bylaws. And and we'll go through, you know, what we're what we're recommending. Um one of the most significant changes and and this is one that requires a charter change is, that's a lot of. Alliteration there, um is um to modify the term for trustees. Um currently, the term is five years. And it's a substantial commitment, um and we've talked as a group and generally, the feeling is that. Um and 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 I can say I saw this when um I went to town hall and spoke with prospective trustee candidates as well. There was much greater comfort in committing to a three-year period of time. And if you look back at the um turnover we've had with respect to this board, I th- I think you'll you'll see, you know. Unfortunately, life gets in the way, um you know, people have personal situations, health situations, et cetera. Um and we would like, this is such an amazing library and an amazing.
And we would like, this is such an amazing library and an amazing town. And we would like more people to experience the leadership of this library than less. So that's one advantage with the briefer term as well. We think we will make it more accessible to more people. Create more interest. And we think we'll expose more of our citizenry to this wonderful library. So that's one of the most important changes. Another change we're contemplating, which would also require a charter amendment. Would be if we modify right now. Actually, correction, would not require a charter amendment. It would require a bylaw amendment. Our charter permits five to nine trustees. One of the conversations we've had is on whether our, our bylaw specification of five trustees should be amended. To potentially, I think nine successive, potentially seven will be something this group will be discussing. And presenting for the public as well. And again, the argument for that is that life gets in the way and people. Perfect example. So more trustees may be beneficial. It also enables us, we do a lot of great work in committees. Really deep diving into research on key issues for the library. And at this point in time, particularly as we're down to a board of four. You know, we, we come down to everyone doubling up on multiple committees. If we could really spread out that work. Again, I think it would, it would benefit the community because we'd have more community members touching these various issues. And spread the work for the volunteer board. Any other issues?
No, thank you for explaining.
Yep. All right. Oh, just one moment. I just wanted to run through building and grounds real quick. We have not had, so to speak to the building and grounds committee. And I'm supported by Pam and as well as Bob in that regard. We haven't had, we've had a lot of activity, but no major developments. We are moving forward and setting up a meeting with the selected architect for the facade. Improvements KGND. So that will take place. Bob's been doing a lot of work in getting our resurfacing project moving. You know, we're working to establish a date, which does impact the public as well as our staff in terms of. Having, we're really going to have to shut down our parking. And move to alternative nearby locations for probably three days. And Bob's working on signage, et cetera. For that development. Let's see, we continue to work. We've got the electrical panel. From I think the 1970s that, that needs to be replaced. And we've been working with a engineer consultant to help us draft specs. So we can get a variety of proposals for consideration for that replacement. Unfortunately, the consultant, consultant's firm was purchased and so now we have to kind of. Restart the process with the newly, new ownership and firm. So we'll move forward in that regard. And I think those are the important projects. We are consultant. Our facilities consultant, it's taken a number of vacations in May. Just a few things are hitting all at once. So we are. On him to try and get a number of these things finalized before we lose him for a few weeks. One is the screen. Repair or replacement. Another is working on an RFP to help us. Select and purchase new equipment to make this whole space much more usable for more events for the public. Anything else that comes to mind for you in terms of the. Major issues we're trying to get rolling? Will it be engine?
No, that seems to cover it. I'm.
Am I, pardon me, I don't know the rules. I wanted to just make sure that that screen will mop you down the book sale.
Make sure it's not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we, we have had a vendor. Look at it. I'm not going to promise, but.
I'm sure it's a big expense. But thank you for letting us.
You need all this space, but we know that. Yep, yep. Good reminder. Thank you.
Okay, communications, anything to add?
No, we're waiting on from Dean from Stratagem to give us about some outside. Notification boards, electronic boards, which is, the idea of it is very exciting. And so we're waiting on that. And that's, hopefully we'll get that soon. Okay.
For safety and security. I will say now that the system is in place. We replaced in line with earlier meetings and motions. A system that had. Involved cameras from Hikvision, which a number of governmental agencies had moved to preclude. Because the company was viewed as part of the state of China. And there were security concerns. So those, those cameras are now gone, have been replaced, upgraded, et cetera. And that concern is removed. Anything else on human resources apart from the. Handbook mostly?
No, nothing besides the.
Okay, it's all yours.
Okay, so. Dana Wu had done a amazing amount of work. She was a board member in terms of making improvements to the handbook. And I would like to make a motion to have our legal counsel. Review the updates that we made collaboratively to reflect changes that will enable. What's currently working, the quote unquote, find the book. I'm intended. And BSK or our legal firm gave us an estimated cost of 3,000. I think we would like to say maybe 3,500 to be a little bit more cautious. They're obviously understanding of our needs. So my motion would be to move forward with having our legal team review the, the updated handbook.
Brian, just to circle back on that, well, first of all, I second the motion. So now we can have discussion. Chris Kurtz of BSK came back with a clarification that. I was remembering the low end of the number, of the range, which is what I do. Exactly. So he gave us either an hourly range of 10 to 20 hours or a, or a single cost of $5,000. Do you feel we're better off one way or another?
I have, I have a question. So, so is it in past discussions about the employee handbook? Like, is it that we're giving it to BSK in the, in the current state that it is? Or does it, does BSK know how to, you know, what needs to get updated, working with Bob? And you know, like, how is it done? Like, how does an updated employee handbook get done?
So we've been redlining it to reflect changes we would suggest and that, that will be vetted with this, this board. And the library director undoubtedly will review with department heads.
Okay, and that's done to, or BSK looks at it to highlight.
Okay.
Kind of areas of concern or, you know, where, where we think of.
Or rotating it like the, like the nursing. Okay.
And they'll, they'll point out to us in the areas of potential legal vulnerability or maybe we should just visit.
When was the last time the employee handbook was?
October 19, October 2019.
2019. Okay, thank you. You can, my discussion's over if you want to take the vote.
We still have quorum, all in favor? Oh, forgive me, we need to restate the motion. Are we going to agree to hours or not?
Do we, do we have to say that? Like, maybe they need to see it. Like, what, like, do we have to decide right now? If it's going to be hours? Or, or, you know, flat?
So the labor law expert at BSK, our legal counsel, has reviewed the handbook. Has some sense of the potential project and gave us either a variable estimate of 10 to 20 hours. Or said he could lock in at $5,000. Okay.
A motion to lock in. Yeah, I, I would rather keep a fixed cost.
We're trying to do this, you know, five years, not every one year. So we'd rather spend more time to get it, get it right. Please time around.
I apologize. Can I ask you to restate?
Yeah, I'll restate the motion to have our legal counsel, BSK, review our revised employee handbook for the fixed amount of bylaws.
I'll second it. All in favor? Is there any other business before we turn to public comments?
No.
Do we have any public comments, Shanta?
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes, good evening. Hi. I wanted to make two comments about the budget. One is that the, the budget document you discussed on the 18th was not online. Until several days after the meeting. That hamstrings the public's ability who's watching it in real time to follow along. It's also not compliant with the requirement that documents be up 24 hours before the meeting. Then secondly, I think that I heard tonight. Mentioned that you did not, you're not required to put the recording of that meeting online if you have the minutes. And that's not what the law says. The law says that the recording has to be. On your website through a link, five business days after the meeting. So. That would be tomorrow's the fifth business day. And if you're not able to participate in real time on these meetings, which, you know, you have had quite a few that. To get business done, you've had quite a few special meetings at different hours of the day. It's hard to follow the, the timing of it. So putting it online helps the public stay informed and it also is what the law says. So it does have to be there. The minutes are not enough. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any additional? Just checking if there are any further comments. Okay, no. No. Okay. Let's see. So then just some reminders for ourselves. Our board package for the next meeting, we are targeting May 1st. That's between our library director and myself. Brian, I think you're going to arrange for Nauraki Smith to join our next meeting, either by video or in person?
Probably will likely do by video.
Okay. We'll administer.
Where's the office?
During my.
And will PKF O'Connor Davies join us as well?
Yes, he will be available.
By video likely.
Yeah.
Right. So we've spoken to it several times in this meeting. Our next meeting will be Monday, May 8th at 7 o'clock in the Chapua Library Theater. And with that, I move for adjournment. Do I have a second?
I should say, forgive me.
Thank you very much. Brian, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.